Twenty-one, this evening we have four scheduled items on the agenda. One of which does not require a variance, that's Thomas Landscape Holbarn. So we have three matters after that was cleaned up. We do have an administrative matter, we got the board, or the meeting minutes at the end. And then we also have an organizational matter that we'll address right off the bat. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Barry Barone as Vice Chair to the Zone Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do have a full board this evening, and if we call roll.
Mr. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Barone?
Here.
Mr. Stappenback?
Here.
Mrs. Bolo?
Here.
Mr. Houser?
Here.
Mr. DiMarco?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Okay, good rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the representative states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Ready for the first one?
Come on.
Seven oh five North Brook.
Oh.
Nope.
We do have proof of legal publications for each of this evening's matters from the Webster Herald.
Okay.
All right.
Seven oh five North Brook.
Lasty.
Located at seven oh five North Brookway, applicant David Letterhouse is requesting an area variance to allow a 3.8 foot north side setback and a 4.3 foot west side, west rear setback where 15 feet is required associated with the installation of a 10 by 16 foot utility shed on a .60 acre parcel having SBL number 064.17-2-36 located in an R3 single-family residential zoning district under section 225-48 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name, address, and tell us about your project.
David Leaderhouse, seven oh five North Brookway. My project that we're doing is we're replacing a utility shed on our property. The utility shed is an existing structure and we're replacing it with a larger structure that is about two times the size of the current shed.
Is there a permit for the, is there a permit for the shed that's there now? Did you get a variance once before?
The shed was there when we moved in.
Okay.
Anything else, Don? That's it?
That's it.
All right. So the new shed obviously is a little bit larger than the existing. I see that it's wooded, shielded on both sides of the property, it's a pretty irregular-shaped lot in the back. I guess my question would be, why can't you come in a little bit further on both sides?
As you said, the way that our lot is shaped, it's basically in the backyard, it's a triangle shape. If we come in any further on any of the sides, we would lose a significant amount of property. Particularly, our plans in the future are to add a swimming pool someday, which would obviously impact that particular goal.
Now, when you go with larger sheds, isn't that going to get closer to that other line as well, the other rear line? So that'll be less than 15 also, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would.
So it's actually, it's like another setback that comes into play there, I think. Am I seeing that right?
Are you talking about on this north, uh, no, that would be the southwest?
Yeah, because the shed is twice as big as the one that's there.
Depends on the angle, right? We don't have a dimension off that lot.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that. Now, is there a slab there or something, or is it just a wooden floor?
It's just on dirt right now.
So there's nothing, nothing concrete there, or anything that you need to reutilize or anything like that?
No, no, it's right on the ground.
I, it's kind of a, a nook, that corner there with trees around it, but it would still be nice to see a little bit more setback.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and maybe square it up or something, I'm not sure what your thoughts are. There's not, we've, we've, we've given shed variances where it's on a concrete slab and people want to re-raise that slab, but there's, there's nothing, nothing there.
I agree with you, Barry. I'd like to see a little more compliance than what is being requested. Applicant does not lose any yard, he still owns the same property, same amount of property. I do sympathize with him as far as the future pool, but he certainly has ample enough room between that and an easy shed that would be located in that portion of the yard.
Yeah, I agree. I would think seven seems reasonable, seven back, seven side, bringing in another three, four feet, and I think that compromises what, you know, the requirements are at 15. And at least it gives a little bit more separation from the lot line.
Well, my only question is, if you bring it in seven from the side, granted, I don't have a scale, does that then mean that another variance would also be needed from the side, from the, um...
I see what you're saying.
The west side.
I think he's got, it's got to come forward seven.
I mean, if it comes, maybe if it comes forward seven, it doesn't matter.
So then it gets greater separation.
Well, I think that regardless of where we put it in the backyard, I'm going to need a variance, because I believe that the yard is probably only, I think it's like 30 feet wide at the center part.
Well, oftentimes we'll see people coming for shed variance, but their lot's 60 feet wide and 150 feet deep. And this lot's 116 feet wide, and it's, if I add up the numbers, it's over 200 feet deep. I mean, it's in a little weird shape, but it's really a big lot, in order to, there's a lot of...
Well, the front of the lot is an easement for drainage.
Yeah.
Well, I think the question becomes is, what's that lot line? Is that a side lot line, or is that a rear lot line? Is that one angle or continuation of the rear lot line? See where the number 43 is, 43 feet?
Right. Yep.
Right? So is that all one lot line, one rear lot line, all the way across and down to where it says 28 feet, I believe? If you follow that line from right to left, you'll see the numbers at the top, 43 feet, then it says 63 feet, then it says wood bombed, or wood board fence, and then it says 28 feet. Is that all considered a rear lot line?
Well, the 43 feet is actually, I think, 4.3 feet, and it's the setback. Am I looking at the same one?
Oh, yeah, 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 yes. Right, yes. That's, that's my point, is all the way across.
Well, I would consider looking at the wood bamboo fence running back to that 4.3 feet as a rear lot line. Even though it's an awkward shape, wouldn't we have to define it as a rear lot line?
I'm just, it's just because of the awkward shape of it. Right, so then that plays into the variance request, right? Whether it's a side or a rear lot line. That might become irrelevant if it's a, if we just say seven back and seven rear, or side.
I would say that's the rear setback, rear lot. I mean, it's the furthest point back from the street, that little piece that you're looking at.
Right, but I guess my question is, is that rear lot line go, so if you're pulling the paper straight up, does it go all the way from that little segment where the frame shed is, all the way back down around to, I guess that's 28?
I would disagree, because of these existing setbacks to the house, 18.4 feet.
Would be a side.
They considered that a side when the house was granted to CBO.
Yeah.
And the only portion that would be the rear property line would be the 20 feet.
Which is interesting, because you wouldn't think that would be a rear lot line. So that means that there's three angles to the, to the side setback.
That's correct.
No, I don't disagree with it. It has to be, because it's 18 feet.
Yeah, that's right.
Doesn't make sense to me.
I don't want to cause bigger issues, and I would consider that a bigger issue.
Trying to see if I can get a definition. Rear lot line. Don makes a good point, it's got to be the side, because it's 18 foot side setback, or 15 foot, you assume.
Well, either way, the code is 15 from the side and 15 from the rear, so...
Right. I was just trying to make the argument to, to her point, if we could consider it a rear lot line, seven feet becomes irrelevant if, if it doesn't.
Right. Now, let me ask, when you replace this shed, this shed now is at a slight angle to the rear lot line, are you planning on putting in the new shed parallel to the side, or the rear wall, parallel to the rear, or at the same angle?
It would be on the same angle, on the same footprint.
Just extending further into the yard?
Yep.
Okay.
I think the issue is, we don't have any confirmatory setback for that one side sideline.
You mean the 12514, the 4105 to the west?
Yeah, exactly. Do you have a measurement on that corner to the shed?
No, the only thing I have is this survey instrument. Once the weather gets better, I'm going to get a measurement wheel and measure it out.
What's the size of the existing shed?
The existing shed is eight by 10.
Eight by 10. Oh, you're looking at 10 by 16, so the one dimension's only going to change by two feet, correct? The 16 is going to come forward?
In this case, it would go to the side, to the west. So the depth stays the same, but it just goes from eight feet to 16 feet.
Oh, so actually you are going to get closer to that other...
That's correct.
In other words, the eight-foot dimension's going to double, the width of it.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, it's got to come forward. It's got to come forward.
The way I, I guess my recommendation would be, if you guys are of the same opinion, would be to move forward with a minimum of seven foot rear, a minimum of seven foot side, and you got to comply with a 15 feet on the one side. He can place it wherever he wants, right? He might have to come more than seven feet on the back to get the 15 foot on the side.
Yeah, he's going to, he's going to have to...
He might have to come more this way.
That's correct.
We don't really care, as long as he hits, at your, your minimum, could be seven foot rear and seven side, but you've got to hit 15 on that 125.14. So you may have to come forward more than seven to achieve that.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Is that, is that...
I agree.
Those parameters are going to determine the location. What you said's going to determine the location of the shed.
Right.
And did, did you think of incorporating the shed in the future with the pool installation? I'm just putting that out there as a reconsideration for having to pull the shed.
You mean as far as applying for a new variance?
No, as far as, would you be utilizing the shed, do you think, for the pumps or anything for the pool?
Oh, as far as putting a pump inside the shed, no, but we would be storing pool supplies and that kind of stuff in there.
Just saying, as you consider where the footprint falls, maybe that's something to consider, is it advantageous to have it closer to the pool?
Okay.
For the future.
So would you be agreeable to seven foot, would you be agreeable to a seven foot setback?
Whoever did this...
I'm sorry, what's that? Would you be agreeable if we made a motion for a seven foot side rear setback? That's, that's what I, actually, I think Don mentioned that number, and Jamie mentioned that number, seven feet, and I, very rare that we let someone put a shed three feet from a lot line, or 3.7 feet from, seven feet's a little more reasonable.
Seven from the, from where it is existing?
Seven feet from the line.
From the lot line.
From the rear line and the, and the north sideline.
Um, yeah, I mean, if that's the only way we can get it done, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this meeting's open, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. I guess the process is, we go to the phone lines. So the only concern that you have is making sure you meet that 15 foot side setback, right? However you place it, seven and seven.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to assume that nobody's calling in, so we'll move forward. Pursuant to NYCR, section 617 in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, seems like we have a path forward, the applicants in agreement with seven foot. I guess that would be the north side setback and a seven foot west rear lot line setback. And then you've got to comply with 15 foot on the other side. Anyone care to go through the findings?
I'll go through the standards. I noticed, when I visited site, there's other sheds in the neighborhood that obviously we've built incorrectly law variances, but it's not out of character with the neighborhood. It's an interesting corner to that lot, and that it's totally surrounded with evergreen trees, so it's really not visible from the neighboring properties. So there is no detriment created. The existing shed's been there for a number of years with no detriment to the neighbors. The benefit is achievable by other methods, but it's an odd-shaped lot, and I could understand the applicant's desire to put that shed back into that corner, because that corner's really not usable for anything else. Request is not substantial in that he, he's actually moving it further from the line as requested by this board than the existing shed is. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. We've had no objections from the neighbors, no write-ins, right, Josh? No write-ins or anything like that, so the neighbors apparently are not opposed to it. It's not an undesirable change, and actually, the applicant conceded some extra footage, so we're going to get a little further from the line than the existing shed. Anything, anything else?
The, the only private special condition I would recommend that we add, so you don't have two sheds on the property, but I think your letter states us you're going to demolish the existing shed before the new one comes in.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance for seven oh five North Brookway, applicant David Leaderhouse. For a, replacing the existing shed, the existing shed's going to be removed or demolished with a seven foot side, it will be a north side setback, seven foot rear setback, and that's to the west. The other setback will remain 15 feet from the other sideline, as per code. For the installation of a 10 foot by 16 foot utility shed on a .6 acre parcel, have an SBL number 064.17-2-36 located in R3 single-family residential zoning district under section 225-48 of the code of the town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Houser?
Aye.
Mr. Stappenback?
Aye.
Mr. Newton?
Aye. Okay, you've got your variance. Obviously, the one special condition we talked about, demolishing that existing shed before the new one goes in. And then two additional requirements, must obtain unnecessary governmental permits, including a town building permit for the shed, and one year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening. Josh?
Mr. Leaderhouse, my understanding is a building permit was issued for the shed?
There was a permit issued, but they didn't release it to me pending this hearing.
Okay. What you may want to do is make sure that those dimensions and the variance granted shows up on that, it'll help you out in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set. Okay, the next application, 552 West Creek Drive. Josh, you already talked to him, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think we elected to at least listen to the application, knowing that we're going to have to make an amendment and re-advertise it for the side versus the rear setback.
Yeah.
So why don't you go ahead, present the application. We'll read it into the record, and then the next time you come back, hopefully it'll, it'll be streamlined.
552 West Creek Drive Fence, located at 552 West Creek Drive, applicant Andrew Lloyd is requesting an area variance to allow a two foot rear setback where 10 feet is required associated with the construction of a six foot tile privacy fence along the rear of a .54 acre parcel having SBL number 064.01-1-68 located in an LL large lot, single-family residential zoning district under section 225-77 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me present this evening. So the project I'm asking, proposing, is just a six foot privacy fence, white vinyl with four by four, pressure-treated, you know, cemented in, well, posts, sorry. What I'm asking for is a two foot setback on either side of the fence at the ends, no actual adjustment to the rear setback. That will, that will be 10 feet as per code. For me, it's, it's kind of a safety issue. Our lot ends with a fairly steep drop down to a privacy, or a private road that runs behind us. It's fairly highly trafficked, varying speeds depending on if it's a resident or a delivery driver or something like that. Also, that slope in the back edge of our property is covered in thorns and vines and poison ivy and other such hazards and things like that, and I have two young children. So putting up that fence and extending it as far as possible will block out as much of that as possible to keep my kids safe from both going down the hill, the private road, and everything else that's back there.
So in order for this to comply, he's already complied, complying with the rear setback along the private drive, you'd have to bring in an additional eight foot in length on the sides to meet the 10 foot. So we're only talking about an eight foot length by the width of the fence, which is probably four by four posts, and then it narrows down, correct?
Yeah, it's four by four post, and then it's just a standard, basic vinyl panels, eight foot panels.
Don, you said you had some questions?
No.
Oh, I thought you said that earlier before you came in, sorry. Any other, anybody have any comments or questions at all?
I, I visited the lot thinking that it was a two foot rear setback, not a two foot side setback. And the, it makes sense where the applicant would like to put the fence, and it makes sense to continue it as far along that lot line as possible, just because it is creating a barrier to keep his children out of Winding Creek. It's a significant drop down that hill. There is quite a bit of traffic down Winding Creek now that we live in the Amazon, Grubhub world of lots of delivery trucks driving. When it was just the residents, it probably wasn't so bad, but there is quite a bit of traffic that goes up and down that road. And it would, it would certainly be the right place for the fence, and it, it wouldn't be logical to shorten it, just based on where the trees are and the topography of that lot.
I see we have letters from the neighbors on the inside in support of the application, and those are the only people that that fence really affects, because it's neighbor to the north and the south, both. So when you look at it, at the end of the fence that you're looking at, and that's the thickness of the fence, that's all it is. Minor impact, or memo impact. Correct, I mean that?
Do the neighbors have similar fencing styles?
No, neither neighbor has fences, direct, direct neighbors have fences. There are pool fences and such in the neighborhood, but no, there's, there's no existing, like, permanent fence.
Okay. Okay, we will not go to the public portion, because we'll wait till the re-advertising and then address it then. Anybody have any other comments or questions? No? Okay.
All set. Thanks very much.
I guess. What, you're just going to coordinate with him on the re-advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have the survey man reflect exactly what he's proposing to do, and I guess I'll work with you to get that information.
Okay, perfect. Should I contact you tomorrow, or just wait to hear from you?
Yeah, I'll reach out. Well, we have to re-advertise.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Not table, it's a re-advertising.
Well, just adjourn.
Right. Yeah.
We don't need it formally tabled.
Not because it's got to be an evaluation. The bullet, he can adopt the findings, or at least the, or the record from today to be incorporated into the record next time. Makes sense. Okay. Last application for this evening is 261 Volk Road.
261 Volk Road Special Permit, located at 261 Volk Road, applicant Tammy Proof is requesting a special permit to allow the adoption of two pot-bellied pigs as pets and establish a small outdoor area with fencing within her backyard for them to periodically be outside on a .30 acre parcel having SBL number 078, I'm sorry, 078.10-1-30 located in an R3 single-family zoning district under section 225-110 of the code of the town of Webster.
My daughter has some PowerPoint for you guys, so excuse me.
Name and address, please.
My name is Tammy Proof, and I live at 261 Volk Road.
Thank you.
So I've lived in Webster for 15 years, and I'm requested a variance for two small, two small pot-bellied pigs as pets. I volunteered at Lollipop Farm for one year, now specifically working with pot-bellied pigs. On the next slide, you'll see pictures of two pot-bellied pigs I'm trying to adopt. On the left is Ebenezer, and on the right is Babe. So when I called the town, I was told, told that getting two pot-bellied pigs was a gray area. If you'll flip the next page, you'll see the two codes that I was informed was the reason that two pot-bellied pigs could be taken away from me if I did not get a variance. Are you familiar with the two codes, or did you want me to read those out loud?
Okay, we're good, we're familiar.
You guys know the codes, all right. So on the next slide, I'm addressing code 225-40 that states there's no swine allowed on the property. To be clear, pot-bellied pigs are not swine. I have a picture of the first thing that comes up on Google search that explains the difference between a pot-bellied pig and swine. Quote, "The use of the word swine or pigs typically refers to meat animals when referring to livestock. Pot-bellied pigs are not meat animals, therefore shouldn't be classified in the same category. They provide nothing but companionship," end quote. If you flip the page, I have an article, an image of an article I found that explains that pigs come in a variety of shapes and sizes. They are bred for different purposes. There are three different types of pigs, pets, livestock, and those used for medical research. I wanted to point out that this article states that pot-bellied pigs are bred and sold as pets. The purpose of these animals is to be family companions as pets. On the next slide, it defines what pigs as livestock are. Livestocks are defined by Merriam-Webster as farm animals to be kept for use in profit. The purpose of these animals is financial profit through food production. If you flip the page, the next slide defines what pigs use for medical research are, and also the three researches that, the three resources that the article got its information from. So there are pigs as pets, livestock, and medical research. The pigs that I'm trying to adopt are for pets only. On the next slide, I'm addressing code 225-41 that states that there's no storage of manure on the property. I'm feeding the pot-bellies only fruits, vegetables, and organic pig pellets, because I'm feeding them organic foods, they are eliminating fertilizer and not manure. The fertilizer can be composted, and I will have a compost bin in the back of the garage. Also, the pot-bellies are... Also, the pot-bellies are potty-trained to go in a kiddie pool. In the summer, the litter box will be kept in the back of the property, and in the winter, it would be cut by the garage due to the snow. I can put in an organic refresher to eliminate any possible odor. There should be no odor, however, since they are eliminating fertilizer. The refresher is a secondary product that the store manager, Country Max, told me about. If you flip the page, I'm addressing any concerns you have from my neighborhood. I have handwritten letters of approval from some of my neighbors. I have personally talked to 11 of my neighbors within 100 feet of my property line. No one had an issue with it, and most of them were actually excited for me and wanted to come over to see them. I will also be putting up a four-foot privacy fence just as a courtesy to my neighbors. I will be installing pig wiring at the bottom so the pot-bellies don't get out. This is strictly for the safety of the pigs. I would like to point out that no property will be changed or damaged, including the neighbor's property. This will also be no environmental change. On the next slide, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about Babe and Ebenezer. Babe is a five-year-old female who's approximately 70 pounds and has reached her full size. And Ebenezer is a three-year-old male who's approximately 60 pounds, and he has reached his full size. Babe is spayed, and Ebenezer is neutered, so they will not have any babies. The next slide goes into a little bit more detail about Ebenezer and Babe. They were surrendered to Lollipop Farm after being house pigs. Babe was living in an apartment, and when they moved, they couldn't bring her with them. And Ebenezer was living in Pennsylvania, and his owners were running from a domestic violence situation, and so they couldn't bring him with them. I just wanted to point this out, that they were not surrendered due to any fault of their own. Both are extremely friendly and not aggressive or destructive whatsoever. They both respond to their names, eat out of my hands, and roll over for belly rubs. They are both timid and sweet, play fetch among other games, and they're just like dogs. So, why do I want to take them in? Currently, Lollipop has an overabundance of pigs, and they're trying to adopt out the pigs they have. Babe and Ebenezer are bonded and need to stay together. Pot-bellieds are social animals and require companionship of another pig. They are happy when they are a buddy of their own. Babe and Ebenezer are not used to being around so many pigs. Right now, Lollipop has over 50 pigs and are taking in more that are in need. I have grown to become attached to these two and would hate to part with them. I know it could provide the best life for these two. I will be taking them as pets and will treat them as such. I consider this a lifelong commitment, just like a dog would be. This is why I'm trying to get a variance, so I know I will be their forever home. There was a typo on my first letter of intent. It was only 11 neighbors that I talked to. I think on my letter of intent, I said 14, so that was a typo. I just wanted to point that out. And if all possible, I did want to have a six-foot fence. I know it says four-foot, but I think for the safety of the pigs and for the privacy of my neighbors, I think a six-foot fence would be better. I did change it at the very last minute. I know, I think you can see where it was six-foot, and I changed it to four-foot. But I think more so, it's more important for me that I want the pigs more than the height of the fence. So, the following pages are just letters from my neighbors with their approval for me having the pot-bellies. And there's a letter of recommendation from Lollipop, and I do have the original letters if you guys need to see those. I also do have a vet already lined up. The vet does come right to the house. So, you guys have any questions?
Thank you for the very thorough presentation.
Thanks.
I guess, just first comment, in terms of the fence...
Yeah.
We're not here to address the fence tonight.
Okay.
You're allowed four-foot on the property line, five-foot at five-foot off the property line, and six-foot at 10-foot.
Okay.
I'd be honest with you, based on the size of the lot, if you ask for anything, in my opinion, beyond a six-foot fence, I don't see that flying, at least from my perspective. I can't speak for the rest of the board members. This is a small lot, and a six-foot fence, I don't... I'll leave it at that. We're not addressing that tonight, but just to make sure that you understand the fence process. We're not addressing that tonight. Just for clarification before we move on, I think it might be important, if we just fully understand that we're not granting a variance, correct? We're granting a special permit for these animals, which means exactly what? Just so that we're all on the same page.
Well, it means that the board has the opportunity to conditionally approve this for a defined period of time and revisit it should any issues arise, if approved.
Does the applicant have to renew the special permit if they meet the conditions on an annual basis?
No, there's nothing in the code that indicates that. I believe it would be up to the board to make those determinations.
I believe the ones that I've been involved with in the past, we set like an evaluation period after a specific amount of time, like maybe one year and three years or something. Do you guys recall?
I know we set, the couple times that we've done a special use permit, we have set a time limit that the town would at least reevaluate to see if there were any issues. And then, if there were, then the matter would come back to the board. But I don't think any of them have come back to the board for reapproval.
I think the only thing that would, you know, that would trigger that was if the neighbors started complaining. And then, the code enforcement officer would notify, hey, we got a problem here. But as long as it goes smoothly, I mean, maybe make it for a year, and then, like you said, maybe three years, beyond two years. I don't know. I guess that's for us to determine. We don't have any experience with pot-bellied pigs. Not to this point anyways.
Has anyone on the board had any issues in the past with a permit like this with animals, or...
Well, this is quite unique. I was going to suggest a two-year trial period, see how that went. And if everything went good, the permit would expire in five years, and having the applicant reapply after five years. It'd be very similar to a special permits for commercial uses. I'm just trying to make some...
No, I agree. The only thing I might say is maybe... So, we can condition it on an expiration of five years? The permit, the special use goes on indefinitely, or...
No.
It expires in five years?
It expires.
So, it has a set expiration? That has to be renewed?
And would it...
That's correct.
Would it expire, or would it...
It would expire.
And then, would the applicant have to come back before this board? Or if there were no issues, the town could just extend it?
No, the applicant would need to apply, reapply.
Yeah, I think so. So, there'd have to be a trigger that's an off renewal period?
Oh, so it's up to the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
But my suggestion...
No, I was kinda heading in the same direction. The only thing I was gonna recommend is maybe a year evaluation to make sure.
I said two.
I don't care.
I would agree with you here, since we don't have any experience with this. And if there's gonna be a problem, it's gonna happen quickly, I think. So, maybe one year makes sense for the first review, or the first...
Well, and I guess I have to give the applicant credit for coming before the board and doing it legitimately.
Yes.
These are not the only pot-bellied pigs in town.
What?
I know, I know. There's chickens too.
Calling to all pot-bellied pigs in town.
But, so...
We better get some more special use permits.
Just hypothetically, people tend to have pigs. You see stuff on Facebook and...
Miniature goats.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small... It's not like having a stable full of bacon next door. And I mean, I have, I have seen... There is a difference. I have been to farms where they slaughter pigs and sell them as food, and they are not the same as pot-bellied pigs at all. But I'm just...I understand that we need to condition it with a timeframe. I just, I don't know, do you...if there are no issues perceived with the neighbors, does the applicant need to keep coming back to this board, I guess is my...
Well, the problem that I see, I mean, there's no licensing for them. It's not like a dog license.
True, true. We're a dog...
And that's why I'm suggesting, suggesting it could be a period of five years. And the only correlation I would have to that is like a special use permit for a commercial use.
Right.
And that's why I said five years.
Oh, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's like a major home occupation. You can condition with a time limit sometimes.
Can I suggest, you know, it seems to me if you make it a shorter period and you put it back on the board's agenda, let's say, you know, in the fall of this year for a report from the appropriate town staff person. And then, that way, you've gone through a full warm season. You've gone through the summer when they're gonna be most exposed to the neighborhood. And it's not that the board has to act, but they could get a report...
Okay.
So that it knows, you know, going forward, whether there's gonna be an extension for a longer period of time, or whether or not it's likely to end. But I think you'd want the report during the season that they're gonna be most interacting, if you will, by smell, sight, or sound with the neighborhood. So, if it was approved, I'd go with a shorter one, but I would get a report, say September, to the board. And then, you could adjust it.
So, it wouldn't expire in September, but we'd get a report back, make it for initial a year, maybe? The pigs stay indoors during the wintertime, or are they outside during the wintertime?
The pigs will always be with me. They'll never be outside by themselves. So, they'll be either in the house, or they'll be outside with me. They're never gonna be alone, so...
Quick question for the applicant. What's the life expectancy of a pot-bellied pig?
They can live 12 to 20 years.
12 to 20.
20 would be outrageous.
Perceivable.
Yeah.
And I'd fully agree with John, that I was thinking the summer period is my biggest concern. Like, the heat of the summer, I think, would be the trigger with the neighborhood.
Do pigs require inoculations like a dog does? Like rabies or anything?
They need rabies, and they need, like, a mite shot. But that the vet comes to the house and does that, and they need their host chmed.
Okay. Let's move forward. This meeting is open to anyone willing to speak for or against this application. If you could call 872-7011. We can field your comments or questions.
The phones are burning, Josh. I didn't look, but the special use issuance is not limited to the town planning for zoning codes.
Correct.
Our authority to do that is...
Absolutely, yes.
Last call for public comment. If you could dial 872-7011.
Okay. I think the last special use permit we gave was an add to that rental dealership next to where Muskows used to be. Muskows, no, it's blast from the past.
Right.
And then, we never heard anything, any complaints from anybody.
The enterprise was down by the...
It's a rental.
Enterprise down by...
But that was a use for it.
So, it was a use for it?
That was a use for it.
They liked that idea, but we've had no negatives.
Yeah, but that was a use for it. It stays with the property where this is a permit.
Was it a use for it?
I think it was a, there was a guy in Candlewood, I wanna say, that had a home business that I thought would give a special use permit.
I know there's a landscaper on gravel that we gave a special use permit to for a major home occupation.
Yeah.
Because that's typically, this is a... That's one of the instances where we would grant this type of a permit.
I'm just trying to draw our past experience.
So, I'll close out the public comment portion of this meeting and move on to seeker. For Set NY CR, Section 617 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker. I'm assuming that's...
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or is this a non-listed action? This might be a non-listed action. I don't know if it's subject to seeker.
Now, you're just gonna have two pigs? You're not gonna add more to that?
No, they're neutered and spayed, so they can't have babies.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe we should condition the special use permit on the numbered pigs as well.
Yeah.
Not just pigs in general.
Well, true, true. It would be for the two...
Correct.
We'd be setting a precedent, so we'd have to... Yeah, I agree very.
The only reason that it would be two is just because I actually only wanted one. But Lollipop won't adopt out just one, so I'll put that out there too.
Now, the, along your backyard, there's a... I'm gonna say it's a six-foot privacy fence, although I didn't measure it. There's a significant wooden fence. Is that yours, or is that the neighbor in Colorado that's behind you?
That's mine.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's already blocking the view from the neighbor that would be most impacted by it in the back.
No.
One, that neighbor in the back, he's one of the ones that wrote a letter.
He has a letter too, so...
Yeah.
And that's it. You have a letter from the neighbor on either side and the neighbor to the rear, which would really be...
Across the street, to the right of me, two houses to the right of me, and my back neighbor.
Now, you realize that chain-linked fence is on your... It's your neighbor's fence, but it's on your property.
Yeah, I realize that.
You must have signed a fence agreement or a fence affidavit to allow that. I'm just curious.
That was there when I moved in, and he's a very nice older man, and I don't bother him, he doesn't bother me, so...
The reason I bring it up is because you're proposing adding another fence inside of that fence, which is already on your property.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seems like we have some friend of ours.
The only issue I would have is establishing an expiration date.
Yeah.
I really think it's required or necessary.
I think one year is the minimum on the permit. And I would recommend that the board condition it upon an inspection by code enforcement at some random date between September 1st and October 1st or November 1st, and provide a report to the board. And at that point, does the code address, in terms of a new extension of time up to the maximum period, it's gotta come back before the board again? Or can that be done administratively? I didn't see anything in that regard. This is a pink elephant.
Well, and can we set it that...
A pink pot-bellied pig.
The board could certainly say, if it's not required to come back before the board, that if the board receives the report and there's nothing adverse in the report, that we would authorize administratively for it to be extended. If it is adverse, then we would require the applicant to come back before the board.
I think that would make sense. But can we set the extension to, I don't know, three years, five years? If there's no issue with the first year, they're not gonna be...
Sure. Yeah.
It's...
Why don't we do that? Set it at one year, and then five years. And then, a report out in the fall. Are you fine with that? Is that work for you? You just wanna get these to your house, right? You just wanna get these to your house, right?
What's that?
You just wanna get them to your house, right?
That's right.
Mr. Newtown, so, so are you saying one year and another five years after that? Or is it?
Put a total of six? Is that what you're suggesting? Or are you saying?
I'm, I'm questioning.
We can just set it at five-year total permit, and then she has to renew for the permit in five years.
Okay.
The one year, after one year from this evening, you would, we would have to get an extension up to the five years.
So you guys will come out in September, look, and then if everything's fine, that it extends out for five years? And then I come back in five years?
That's for four years from tonight, right? So, one year.
Yeah.
Then you would get a, a five, four-year extension.
Okay.
So five years from tonight would be the, the window. Then you would have to reapply for the special use a- after five years.
So go through this again?
Yes.
Yes, if the code doesn't change.
But yeah, if the code changes, then it may be, under this scenario, allowable.
Well, and can, does it have to be a reapply? Or can it be, um, at the end of five years, an extension of the existing?
Well, I think that's what we're doing now, we're doing a one-year with a four-year extension. Administrative extension after one year, provided that all goes well. This at least lets us to revisit it, reset it, make sure nothing's changed.
Right, right.
And then set a new five years. I mean, not to be negative, but I'm assuming ten years, the pigs are how old now?
Three and five?
Yeah, so, yeah, they're.
And the code may change by then, so.
Right.
So just, just out of curiosity, if in five years, the code doesn't change, and you guys tell me no, then what happens?
Generally, there's only an enforcement when there's a problem. So if there's no problems, this board wouldn't have any issue with that.
Well, and that's where I'm wondering if we would have to, if the, if the applicant would have to apply for permission all over again, or just apply for an extension, if there's no, assuming that there's no issue, um.
Josh, how, how's that work administratively?
We've not.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that administratively, but, but this section of code doesn't really speak to the specific.
Yes.
Nature of what to do after the original term, how to handle it. But assuming there's no complaints or issues, I would have no, I'd feel comfortable extending it administratively. Again, the code doesn't speak to that. I think you're gonna see a lot of change in terms of homesteading and farming, and everything that's changing in this town. And I think the town needs to address, uh, this concept of, of homesteading, um, hobby farming, whatever you wanna call it. And I'd feel more comfortable, I agree with Don, set a five-year, see how things change and progress by then.
Okay.
And then revisit it, if, as Barry said, if all goes well, it's, becomes irrelevant, it's just.
Okay.
It's a formality, but at least it gives some conclusion to this permit term.
I just don't want five years from now, for the board, to just arbitrarily decide that we no longer want pot-bellied pigs in town if it hasn't been an issue.
Right.
And now I've got, it, it could be my dogs, you know, now I have this pet that I'm gonna rip out of the.
Well, the nice thing is we have evidence on record of our thoughts.
Okay, all right.
And the applicant, you know, certainly has the right to ask for those records and submit them as evidence.
True. It, cause it's, I mean, it's, and it's the right thing for the town to do, but people have multiple dogs that are much more, I don't wanna say obnoxious, but much more noticed by the neighbors, just by nature of the fact that dogs are much noisier than.
Yeah, I think I'd probably like these pigs next to me than a couple of dogs that are here barking.
I just wanted to, to say that that's why I did it this way, because I could've very easily just dropped them home, because it was a gray area, and if none of my neighbors complained. But, but I wanted to do it the correct way, which is why I didn't wanna ever have anybody come in five years and say, no, you gotta.
Yeah.
That's smarter, that's the right thing to do.
But just, you know, actually, what Jamie's alluded to is that within five years, the codes might change that make, that she won't have to come back.
That's right.
Yeah.
Exactly. Very well be, uh, you know.
And you set the right parameters, so that, like with Jamie's point to the homesteading, somebody might be trying to use her as an example for another farm-type animal. But at least we've set parameters on her, so I think we're good.
You may be testifying as an expert from town board.
All right.
That, that'd be, that'd be funny, but this, these two are a couple?
No, no.
No, oh, God, I mean, I'm just wondering, it's a male and female, what happens when more pigs come?
No, they're spaying.
They're no more pigs. No, they're just bonded, so they were kinda brought in at the same time, so they got comfort with each other, because they were so scared.
So you are, you would, if we grant this, you, you would be limited to two pigs?
No, more than two pigs, I only wanted one, but.
I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I don't recall, I don't have anything in front of me, but I don't, finding's a fact, I think we've kind of addressed all of the issues. I don't think we, from a standard standpoint, there's nothing we really need to address, right?
The, um, the town code has a, um, a section of criteria that is set forth.
Standards?
Yes.
Do you like me to read them?
Why don't you, that make, that makes sense, and, uh.
Oh, essential. Oh, that's the regular set of.
No, we have the special permit, uh, zoning, uh, criteria, so, sure.
Okay, so before granting approval to any special permit use, the zoning board of appeals shall determine whether the proposed special use will, among other things, satisfy the following considerations. Will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties or of properties in adjacent districts. Uh, the public health, safety, general welfare, or order of the town will not be adversely affected by the proposed use and its location. The use will be in general harmony with and promote the general purposes and intent of the most recent comprehensive plan. The proposed use will not interfere with the preservation of general character of the neighborhood in which such building is to be placed or use is to be conducted, and that the proposed use will in fact be compatible with its surroundings and with the character of the neighborhood and of the community in general. The physical characteristics and t- topography of the proposed site make it suitable for the proposed use. The proposed special use provides appropriate landscaping and/or other forms of buffering to protect surrounding land uses. The property has sufficient, appropriate, and adequate area for the use, as well as reasonably anticipated operation thereof. Access to facilities is adequate for the estimated, uh, traffic generated by the use. And this next one is about parking and traffic circulation can be accommodated on the property. Um, adequate facilities exist or can be integrated into the site development to properly deal with stormwater runoff, um, sanitary sewers, fire protection, electrical power needs, refuse, or other waste that may be generated, odors, noise, or lights which may go beyond property boundaries. The natural characteristics of the site are such that proposed use may be introduced on the property without undue disturbance or disruption of important natural features, systems, or processes, and without negative impact to groundwater and surface waters on and off the site. And the final one is the proposed use can and will comply with all provisions of this chapter and of the code which are applicable to it, and can meet every other applicable federal, state, county, and local law ordinance, rule, or regulation.
Do we address each of those standards?
I think we could frame them out in a few categories, right?
Yeah, and, and out of fifteen, there's probably six or seven that are applicable. And out of the six or seven, four or five of them are identical.
So I think we can address at least from an environmental or char- or, or characteristics of the neighborhood, or impacts on the neighborhood, we can kinda frame it up there.
Yes.
I think she's addressed a lot of this in the PowerPoint that we'll include with the file on record, uh, for this request. Any concerns on that front? Kind of the characteristics of the neighborhood or environmental concerns? The odor issue, I think we are addressing that by limiting the term of the permit to one, one year with a four-year extension, with an evaluation in the fall, so that we're addressing a lot of these, I would think. What else we got?
The concern I would have is, uh, storage of the manure, or, uh, disposal of the, uh, manure.
Your intent was to compost and using gardens on the property, or remove?
Um, compost, I have a neighbor that's three doors down that wants to use it, I don't plan on using it.
And I think you had mentioned an odor neutralizer for the compost pile?
Yeah.
From, from the farm store.
You can also use lime too.
I think the management of the waste is probably.
The biggest concern.
Big, I, I mean, I don't think, they don't make any noise, do they, like dogs barking?
They wink.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought. But, I mean, it's all a matter of the owner tending to the waste product and disposing of it, so that odor doesn't affect the neighbor.
Well, what I'm trying to avoid is, um, uh, storing it where it would offend somebody if it's located too close to a fence. And if it's, you know, if it, for one reason or another, does put out odor, the, uh, neighbor, uh, would, uh, take some grief to that. I mean, you indicated you're going to store it behind your garage.
That's where the compost would be. Um, I was, so, they're potty training to go in the pool. Um, you cut the tip of the pool off, and that's where they're potty training to go. Um, I wanted to put that in the back of my yard in the summer, because the neighbor in my backyard, that's actually woods, he doesn't use it. So that would, if there was an odor, that would be the safest spot to put it. And obviously, in the winter, to put it next to my garage, do, I mean, I can't get to the back of my yard in the winter, so. And I would obviously clean it up after every time they use it, so.
Right, so it's gonna be important to be sensitive to that issue.
Absolutely.
And, um, over a period of three or four months, I'm assuming the summertime is most likely time that the odor would spread if, in fact, there was one, so. Um, the code compliance officer will come out, and I would assume as part of his review, they'll survey the neighbors and those circumstances, so you wanna be mindful of that, cause if that is an issue, that criteria being violated could cause a lack of renewal of the permit. So logically, that's, that's a very important one.
Okay.
But the other, the other criteria, um, in terms of its general effect on the town and general harmony, um, general compliance with, with, with the code, I don't see any issues there. There's certainly no parking issues, there's no water runoff issues, uh, no undue disturbance. We talked a little bit about buffering, um, I, I don't know if it's of a particular concern here.
If you would come back looking for some fence variance, possibly.
Maybe.
Possibly.
The site appears to be otherwise suitable. And there's not any known concerns, uh, with adjacent property owners, so I think that, I think that covers it.
On that, uh, on the fence issue, you're, you're gonna install a solid fence regardless, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think that's important to condition this upon. Assuming you're gonna come, I, I think we just make the statement you're gonna comply with the, the town fence code for now?
Okay.
So I, I would recommend, I'm just taking a look at the calendar, um, I think, I'm gonna start too, so if we can, that we should calendar this for the second Tuesday, in, in October, or maybe the first Tuesday in October, and ask that the, uh, compliance officer issue a report for that meeting.
Okay. What date did you say?
I thought either the second or the fourth Tuesday in October. And, um.
Well, let's do it on the fourth.
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
Give it a good workout.
Yep, and so, you know, this way, the, the, uh, compliance officer will make an unannounced visit. You won't know whether he's been around or stopping by, and kinda keep you on your toes, so to speak, and, uh, and we'll get the report, and it'll be, uh, reviewed by the board. I mean, obviously, you're certain, you're welcome to be here.
Okay.
I think, I think the town boards, if you're talking, revisiting town codes in general, I see this as an opportunity, from, see how it works out, and maybe that might influence, you know, some of the ordinances that they put in place in the future. See how it goes.
Okay, I'll take a, a stab at this, does anybody have anything else they wanna add? Okay, I would make a motion to issue a special use permit at two sixty-one Volk Road, uh, for the applicant Tammy Prue, for the adoption and allowance of two, two pot-bellied pigs as pets, and establish a small outdoor area with fencing within her backyard for them to periodically be outside on a point-three acre parcel, having SBL number zero seventy-eight dot ten dash one dash thirty, located in an R-three single-family zoning district under section two twenty-five one-ten of Webster Town Code, with the conditions as follows. Uh, the fence that's proposed will. Yeah.
You did.
Yeah. Um, and, and the only, yes, before I go, the only question we had is whether this was an unlisted action. I called it out as type two, but I think it might be unlisted. So I, I tried to look it up on my phone, but couldn't get there.
You think it might be listed because it's a special use?
Unlisted, an unlisted action, I don't know.
No, I think it is unlisted, but you're saying you think it's.
No, I said, yeah, I said it, I called it out as type two, but I think it might be an unlisted action.
You don't just redo that, amend that?
Yes, well, why don't I just amend my previous recommendation for type two seeker as an unlisted action? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, so that was the only thing that I would. Uh, so with the following, uh, special conditions. Um, you, for the fence that you plan to install, you must, uh, apply for a, a fence permit and, um, comply with town code, four foot on the lot line, five foot off the lot line, or six foot at ten foot off the lot line. That would be side and rear setbacks. Um, we're gonna, we, the motion would be for a one-year permit with a four-year administrative extension, meaning, meaning we will revisit it after one year. But that revisitation will be based on the report out from the compliance, uh, officer on the fourth Tuesday, October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. And then after five years from this evening, you would, uh, need to reapply if town code has not changed. And obviously, you still live there and still have the, uh, the pigs, um, at that time.
Okay.
Anything else that I'm missing?
That's pretty good, and we limited it to two.
Yes, we limited it to two, and, uh, as I said, uh, I pointed out before, um, all documentation as you presented tonight will go on file from, from your PowerPoint presentation through the master, it's town files.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. That concludes this evening's, what?
We have to extra.
Oh, I thought we did.
Do you need a second to vote?
I'll second that. Mr. Newtown.
He's trailing, Griff gets to the hockey game, second.
Mrs. Haller?
Aye.
Mr. Barun?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay. All right, all set, thank you, uh, that concludes this evening's meeting, thank you for watching.